Today is the 23rd day of October 2023. This meeting will now come to order. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance to a Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lemon, will you call the roll force, please?
Director Bentley?
Present.
Director Campos Spitsi?
Present.
Director Mash?
Present.
Director Matthews?
Present.
Director Norwood? Director Papas?
Present.
Director Sullivan?
Present.
Six board members, present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon, and Mr. Norwood is excused tonight. Again, welcome to our Board of Education meeting for Greeley-Evan School District 6. We are glad that you are here, joining us for this event, or maybe you're joining us online. Either way, we're glad to have you participating with us. I just have a few announcements as we get started tonight. And the first of those is that we got to be part of a business partnership breakfast pretty recently, and this is, it was a thank you breakfast for all of the businesses that support District 6, and it's a very specific way that they support District 6, and that they they hire our interns, and we have, we had roughly 100 businesses, is that right, Mr. Asmus? 50. Oh, 50 businesses. No, it was 150 students, that's right, sorry. 50 businesses, 150 students that were interns in our district. It was a fantastic breakfast. Also, it is, we enjoy such great support from our community, and we cannot say thank you enough to these businesses who took a chance and hired some of our students, and we got to hear from several of those students, and how much, we got to hear not just from the students, and how much the opportunity and internship meant for them, but also from the businesses, and how how much it meant to them to have those interns working with them for the summer, or for their period of time that they worked with them. And so again, we just want to say thank you to this community, to the businesses in this community, and encourage our students and businesses in this community. If you're interested in an internship this summer, please make sure that you reach out to us and look for those in your high schools. Also, if you're a business in the community and would like to hire an intern for the summer, please get in touch with us as well. One, another way that had students serving our community, and that's a specific student. Her name's Avalon Parlin, and Avalon did a mural for Sam's Club. And so Sam's Club wanted to do a mural in Evans, in their break room, or some space, I can't remember exactly which, but they wanted to do a mural, and they started talking to our, one of our security officers, Officer McClatchy, and Officer McClatchy said, "I know exactly who you need to speak to," and it's the principal of Chaplo, and so they got in touch with the art teacher at Chaplo, and Avalon Parlin was selected to do a mural for Sam's Club, and it's just one of the number of ways that we want to continue to give back to this community, who's been so good to us. And also, speaking of Avalon Parlin, you can, she was Saturday at the band competition at District 6 Stadium, and just want to say congratulations to all of our, all of our high schools that were there, and I think Greeley West and Greeley Central both had superiors, and also Northridge was, had an excellent, and I think University had an excellent as well. I think those were the four that were there. Hopefully, I'm not forgetting anyone. But congratulations to those schools and their band programs. We appreciate them very much. Well, that is all the announcements I have tonight, so we're going to move on to the approval of the agenda.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 approves the agenda as presented.
Second. Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Saying none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Papas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. We're now on to our board member comments and reports, and tonight, Dr. Campos Spitsi, I think you're first.
All right, I'll try to be brief, but we did a lot in the last couple weeks since our last meeting. Actually, I was counting, I went into Greeley Central High School four times in the last two weeks. So we had our official Board of Education visit with the Wildcats in the last couple weeks, and then as school board directors, we were invited to be part of the Greeley Central Homecoming Parade, and that was so awesome. We got to precariously sit at the edge of a truck bed and not fall off, while we waved at kids, and they demanded candy, which we did not have to throw, but everybody was having a really great time. It was a great experience. I also got to go back in, because Greeley Central has a health club called the Health Occupational Students of America, and they invited to come, to let me be their guest speaker, so I got to talk to a lot of future physical therapists, and doctors, and nurses, and dentists, who are all Greeley Central High School students. And then, last but not least, this Saturday, Greeley Central hosted their second annual Mexican-American Studies Conference, and they invited high schoolers from all three of the major high schools. There were kids from Northridge, Greeley West, and Greeley Central there, listening to sessions about academic identity, cultural awareness. I got to lead the session on STEM and health careers, so I've had a healthy dose of Greeley Central. In the last couple weeks, other things that were really cool to participate in was that D6 Business Partner Appreciation Breakfast that President Matthews mentioned. Natalie was actually on the stage and got to be interviewed, because she was one of the interns who got paid to be at the Sunrise Clinic. And we also, most of us got to attend the Evans State of the City address this last Friday to hear from the mayor at Evans and the vision they have for beautifying their city. And lastly, this was not necessarily school board related, but on Saturday, I also got to go to the multicultural festival that happens at UNC every year, and is a highlight of the year for me and my family. One last thing I wanted to touch on in one of our newsletters, as school board directors, we get a weekly newsletter from our superintendent to just update us on things, and in one of them, she highlighted that we had been featured in mygreeley.com. So mygreeley.com is put on by the, it's community engagement from the city of Greeley, and it's, when you see the slogans, like "We used to be Greeley Unexpected," and now we're like "A Story Best Lived In," and they featured District 6 and how we're transforming education, and specifically, they highlighted our Smart Labs. And I learned something new from reading the website, but apparently, Smart Labs are operated in 35 districts across Colorado, but in the state of Colorado, District 6 has the most Smart Labs in a single district in the state, and in fact, District 6 has the most number of Smart Labs of any school district in the nation. I was like, "Oh, my God, that's so cool." And we're going to get more. We have 17 Smart Labs, and by next summer, we're supposed to be at nearly all of our elementary, middle, and K through 8 schools. And I really like, they highlighted one of the, a teacher's quote who says, "You know, Smart Labs are obviously teaching kids technical skills for the higher grade levels. They're teaching them coding, and circuitry, and robotics, but more than that, this teacher highlighted that they're teaching kids to think well, to learn well, and to work well with others, which are really the three skills you need to get things done." So so proud of District 6, and it's been a really fun two weeks.
Thank you, Dr. Campos Spitsi. Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, it has been a busy couple weeks. I also got to go to the Board of Education tour of Greeley Central. That's my first time in the building on a tour since I've been on the board. I've been to a couple events in the auditorium, but to actually formally get to see the visit and go through the building, see the improvements that they're doing with the bond issue dollars that were allotted to them, to me, it didn't feel like I was in a 100-year-old building. It flowed well, it felt nice, they were proud of it. I told Amy Zuloff I wouldn't tell anybody else this, but I will tell you guys, she did an amazing job as a first-year principal, right, leading Greeley Elementary, or Greeley Central High School. She did a very good job touring, one of the best tours we've been on as far as, you know, seeing all the parts, and just seeing all the different art stuff in the darkroom, and the home ec, or whatever you call it when they're making cookies for the culinary arts, yeah, for the the D6 Business Partner Appreciation the next day. So that was all cool to see it all tie in, and then the business breakfast that we went to, actually, my company got to have a intern ourselves this summer, and you know, just to kind of see that process work, I turned it over to my CFO, and let him and Nelson kind of work out the details and stuff, and so it really is a great program that everybody's really jumped on board. The growth's been exponential. The growth's been exponential this last little while, and just to see how many kids are taking advantage of that, and then to also see the flip side of the, how big of difference, like, that one student was at the aviation flight school, and he, you know, he, he came, kind of came up with an idea, and they're like touting now that they have the cleanest planes in any place in Colorado, right? And that was just, as a business owner, that's an asset when you see a little nugget that you've overlooked, and so to see the kids bringing value to the businesses was just such a huge part because, you know, it's kind of the, the two eyes are better than one, you know, type deal, and just to see stuff from a different perspective was really enlightening for me as a board member and as a business owner to just see the, the value there. So kudos to everybody involved, and Nelson and his team, and everybody that works on that, outstanding, just to kind of watch it blossom. And then I also got to go to the Evans State of the City address and listen to Mayor Clark give his update and all the fun things that Evans do, and I, we don't, we, you know, obviously, it's not as big as Greeley, so we're not there as much, but they are a vital part of our community, and we have a lot of stuff going on there, just so just to formally get that update and just kind of hear the exciting things and hear their excitement on the growth and what they're doing and where they're focused and, you know, fixing the roads and, and like, Dr. Brenda said, the, the improvements to the, the roads and beautification and stuff, it's really exciting just to kind of hear that from them because we kind of get stuck in the Greeley loop all the time, and I, you know, I know it in and out, you know, Mayor Gates does a great job keeping us updated, but here the Evans side was, was great, so lots of stuff coming up, and just excited to kind of keep going and get into wrestling season, so thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Ms. Mash?
Well, it's sometimes hard to find something that the other folks haven't already hit on, but one other thing we were invited to was the Library Innovation Lunch, and if you haven't been to the Link Library, please go visit it. It is spectacular, it is, it feels like something that a big city would have. It has an interactive art exhibit, but what was highlighted during the innovation luncheon was, was all the innovation spaces, so they have, I don't know what the word they used for it, but like a commercial woodworking lab, woodworking place, and they, they mentioned that a, somebody saw a video on YouTube of a piece of furniture that they wanted to make, but they didn't have the tools, and, you know, they're like, maybe I could figure it out, so they brought that to the Link Center and were able to make this table that they wanted to with the help of, of the staff there. And things there are free to the public, there's sometimes a materials fee, but they also have a 3D printer and a laser cutter, and they're teaching folks how to loom and kind of basically anything you want to learn. I really appreciate, they said, if you want to do an art project, but you're not particularly arty, they will give you a little 15-minute art project, no previous experience required. So it was really fun to hear all of the things that the Link is doing. They also help a lot with workforce development, helping people with their resumes and interview skills, and, you know, they're just full service, and there's something for everyone there, so it was really great to get to be a part of that and also to see their, their goals going forward. So I wanted to highlight the Fred Chartis School of Innovation. Sometimes I think it's like a wonderfully kept secret, but they have, they do trimesters, and they call each trimester a loop, and each loop has a theme, and then they do basically, they call it Museum Night, or it's like a science fair type of thing at the end of their trimester. So I went to Museum Night, and for starters, they have so much room and just a beautiful space in the Cameron Building, so thank you to our voters for the bond dollars that went to helping Fred Chartis find their forever home, if you know they were in a couple of different spots over the last few years. But their loop was called Headspace, so for the past however many weeks we are in, they have been studying the brain and synapses and nerves and emotional components of the brain, as well as all the science, and so then they could choose to do a project on something that interests them. So I got to hold a bearded dragon and hear about how he was classically conditioned to relax whenever he heard a bell ring, there was another fish project, something like that. They actually welded their own EEGs, the, you know, electrodes, so that they could measure brainwaves when they asked a kindergartner a math question, and there's, they're using all of, you know, the correct terminology, they have multimedia presentations, but one of the ones that I just thought was, well, two things, so a trio of second graders, two of them had had concussions, fell off the bed or something like that, and so they did a whole project on concussions and what that means to the brain, and they had a video of a little girl shaking an egg in a container, an egg breaking, but then it having water in it, and how the cerebral spinal fluid protects the brain, and I was just blown away by, by how much these, these kiddos knew, and that little flip of, here are the symptoms of a concussion, and part of what Fred Chartis does with their students is teaches them to professionally answer questions and present their data. Sometimes they're even making phone calls or writing professional emails to industry to learn these things. But then, two of the eighth graders did a project on foods and how foods can help your mental health, how, you know, we eat sugar, it gives us a dopamine rush, but then we crash and burn, and we ultimately don't feel better, but if we eat proteins and vegetables, that can help with the appropriate gut bacteria. So they had beans and rice that was very savory that they had made in their Instant Pot, but they made a week-long menu, and they now have a food pantry in their school thanks to the work of the Success Foundation and the Weld Trust, and they made sure that everything that you need for this healthy menu exists in our food pantry. And I just, I know, I'm just so blown away that they, they, they just globally thought about this project and how it could serve their, their community. So that is some really great work that is going on with our students and faculty at the Fred Chartis School of Innovation, and we got to meet with some of our Fulbright scholars, and they were here to observe some of the project-based learning, and that's what is done at Fred Chartis, so, so well done to the students and staff there.
Thank you, Ms. Mash. Ms. Sullivan?
Let's see, first off, I just want to give a shout out to the parents who have all signed up and they devote their time to DAC, which is our District Accountability Committee. Those parents actually are representations of each of the schools where their kids belong, so it's kind of neat to go to these meetings. I just kind of sit back and do a lot of listening, and they do a lot of talking, but they break us down into some groups, and it's kind of good to hear the parents and hear what they have to say and get their feedback of their concerns or frustrations, their excitements of what's going on within their schools and whatnot, so it just gives you a different perspective. So I do appreciate being able to attend those meetings. The other thing I attended too, and I will give Ms. Natalie a shout out, is on Saturday, District Six had their Invitational Band Meet and area schools and whatnot, I think the furthest one was Sterling, maybe, is that the furthest one that came in? And they just do their performances out at the District Six Stadium, and then they have follow-up feedback from the college professors that, you know, teach the marching band, so they give them constructive feedback and whatnot, and they go out there and work with the kids on the field, so it's just kind of neat to hear what they have to say, but also to see how the kids interpret the music and the representation that they bring from their schools. So the other thing that I really liked, and I don't know who started this, but Northridge High School, every time after a performance, I saw pretty much all of their band members stand up and give a standing applause for every single school that was out there, so whoever created that one, kudos to you because that really showed some good sportsmanship, and it was just a highlight to see those kids celebrating one another.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Ms. Papas?
It has been a busy couple of weeks, and the two things that have not been mentioned yet that I think are Weld Project Connect, so I really want to thank United Way for hosting that incredible resource for our communities, but I also want to thank the volunteers from District Six staff as well as the Family Center. Family Center is always at Weld Project Connect, and they're to provide resources for families. The other thing I would like to say is that, yes, we got to listen to the Fulbright Scholars in the work session, which was, it's just so humbling, I think, to listen to people talk about their cultures. I was able to go to the Greeley West Diversity Day, and many of the scholars did presentations to the students at Greeley West, and I was sitting in one session, and I can't remember her name, but it was a presentation about the history of Hungary, and I just realized how isolated I am right here in Greeley, Colorado, and don't really have a sense of that part of the world at all. So I really appreciate that they were here, I appreciate that you shared your stories with us during the work session, and the Greeley West Diversity Day was, I think it's been several years since they were able to do this, and I think it was well-attended, and I thank the Greeley West staff and students for their participation.
Thank you, Ms. Papas. And yeah, I think you, I think we have covered all the events that we've done in the last few weeks, and thank you to our board members for, for making it to those events and to, it takes a lot of time to take time out of the middle of the day and and go to a school and see the Greeley West Diversity Day, or to get up early and go to a breakfast, and so thank you to you guys for, for doing that. And since everything's been mentioned, I'll mention just a couple of things that you can, you guys can go to in the future. Greeley Central on November 3rd and November 4th is putting on a production of Puffs. It's a Harry Potter something, and some connection to Harry Potter, I'm not, I'm not exact, takeoff, maybe that's not the right word. And then Greeley West also is doing Something's afoot on November 10th, 11th, and 12th, so if you like theater, get out and, and see some of our kids in theatrical performances. So that's all I have tonight, and that concludes our board member comments and reports. Next up is our work session report. So Ms. Lemon, will you give us our work session report, please?
The work session began with an overview of upcoming board engagement opportunities. UNC Professor Dr. Madeline Millian and international teachers from the Fulbright Teaching Excellence and Achievement Program shared information about the program and their experiences in District Six. Legal Counsel Nathan Fall followed with a legislative update, and the work session concluded with the opportunity for board members to debrief with comments and reports.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda is our Council of Student Representatives report, so I'd like to invite our Council of Student Representatives to come forward, as well as Mr. Allen. Thank you all for being here tonight.
Good evening, Director Matthews, board members, and Superintendent Pilch. I'm Aaron Allen, the principal at Northridge. Tonight, I have the honor to introduce three remarkable students from Northridge High School. We are here to provide some insight into our school and some of the great opportunities that our students have. I actually met these students last year when I started as co-leader for the Council of Student Representatives. I remember how they were fully invested in every brainstorming session and showed their passion for the district from the first day. Little did I know that I would have the honor of introducing them as the principal of Northridge the following year. Now I get to see them on a daily basis, they never cease to amaze me, whether I'm in the classroom, during school events, or in various extracurricular activities, they embody the spirit of Northridge through and through. And you'll get to see many of these great opportunities that they get to experience when you visit our school tomorrow. Allow me to introduce them to you. First, we have Jashelle Tulid. She is involved in everything from music to STEM to extracurriculars, she'll share more soon. Next, we have Luke Horning. He has a passion for STEM, and he has a clear path set out for himself after high school. And last, but certainly not least, is Brian Maynard. He is a leader in the JRTC program where he leads cadets and is preparing for his future through the opportunities he has at Northridge. I am confident that they will provide you with the insight and perspectives that truly represent Northridge High, what Northridge High School stands for, and we'll start with Jashelle.
Thank you for allowing us to present our school's achievements and improvements this year. My name is Jashelle Tulid. I've been a member of the District Six Council of Student Representatives for the past three years, and I'm an active part of Northridge's performing arts programs, STEM, and National Honor Society. After graduating, I plan to stay in-state to pursue a degree in psychology. Our new permanent principal, Mr. Allen, though only having been part of the Northridge family for a few months, already has a grand vision for the school, and I can't wait to see what he's cooking up for the rest of the school year. He only has the student's success and best interests in mind, and we're lucky to have another principal who possesses a community outlook with D6 CSR. On the topic of amazing people in our building, many students can agree that tons of Northridge teachers and staff are some of the most top-notch people. Teachers and mentors work hard to ensure that students are taking away what they need from their classes and are always putting their students first. As a student, it's wonderful to be able to create bonds with these phenomenal adults and know that they're there to support me in any way I need. Not only do staff go out of their way to help students in the classroom, you can, but you can find a majority of them participating and advising the many successful extracurricular activities hosted at Northridge. Teachers are usually students' first role models after their guardian figures, and Northridge staff have taken the term role model to the next level by serving as amazing humans in their students' education journeys. Thank you for taking the time to listen to and giving me the opportunity to speak and represent Northridge on the CSR board. Up next is Luke.
Hi, I'm Luke Horning. I've been a part of District Six CSR for the last three years, and I'm a senior at Northridge. Today, I will be talking about the bond improvements that have occurred over at Northridge. The, some of the major ones has been at the CTE side of the building, is that we now have an industrial kitchen for our ProStar Club and all that, so that way they can learn how to cook in a professional setting and not just in a home environment, along with new rooms for the, for all the wardrobe and all those classes as well, along with the new STEM lab that has come for STEM students to use before and after school to work on projects and 3D print, little things that they want 3D print. And some more big things have come with this bond, it's also a new secure place for the school, secure door system for the school, which just helps us keep the school safe. Along, and all these improvements are here to secure and just make sure that Northridge is a very safe place, along with some nicer equipment such as new desks and chairs, which are less prone to break now, and a new floor, which is, which is a fresh look for the school to get rid of the old, when it was first built look. And on another note, for our STEM program, we are having a lot more field trips this year, one of the most recent ones being at the Wyoming Air National Guard, where we went there to look at robotics and all that, just to show STEM students what they can do after high school and college and what they want to be if they're interested in it. And the next one being the HP Days of Industry coming up this November 3rd, which is also going to be helping students see more technological stuff they can do, such as, I believe, security, through the techno, all the computers and all that, and IT support, which is really going to help them see what they want to do after college. For example, with me, I've been using the engineering courses at Northridge to help me see if I want to go and become an electrical engineer after high school, or go and pursue a business degree to help my dad expand his electrical company out, which is, and those are some of my plans after high school, see which ones I truly want to go for, and thank you guys for the opportunity to speak. Next up is Brian Maynard.
All right, hello, everyone. I want to thank all the school board members and district staff for the opportunity to speak at this board meeting. My name is Brian Maynard, and I'm a senior at, at Northridge High School, and I've been with the District Six Council of Student Reps for three years now. Once I graduate high school, I plan on enlisting in the Marine Corps. Today, I want to talk to you about some of the unique and great opportunities offered here at Northridge. Starting, Northridge has teamed up with the United States Marine Corps since 2014 to bring us the MCJRTC program, which stands for Marine Corps Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps. It's a mouthful. The program is designed to develop good citizenship, leadership skills, patriotism, and fitness. This program also has extracurricular activities, like a marksmanship team, which is nationally ranked, a drill team, which was started last year, and a raider team, which is currently in the works, and it's all about fitness. This program truly is a one-of-a-kind experience here at Northridge. Next up is our concurrent enrollment. Northridge and Ames have collaborated to give us high school students an early and free start to college. We also gain access to Ames facilities and services, like their library, gym, and databases. This helps us students tremendously as we have more diverse resources to assist in our goals. So we have all these great things at Northridge, but one area you could help us in is funding the JRTC raider team. If our program was to get some additional funding, we would be able to get the proper facilities and assets needed to make a phenomenal raider team, so we can better develop our teamwork and leadership skills. Once again, I want to thank all the school board members and staff for giving us their time to talk about the unique, incredible opportunities at Northridge High School. Thank you.
As you can see, we have some phenomenal students, and they're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Ms. Mash has a question.
I just wonder, thank you for coming. I know you're seniors, and I'm sure you have a lot going on, so thank you for, for coming. Two questions, I was wondering, what is on the horizon for the Northridge Performing Arts Programs, if there's, if there's a play or a musical coming up? And then I was- And then I was also wondering, what exactly is the raider team, and what type of funding, what type of facility would you need for that?
For Performing Arts, we're obviously doing really well with our band program. It's been growing by leaps and bounds. Our choir is also growing as well. We do not yet have a theater teacher, but we have a teacher in the building who has that background, and he's interested in it, but that's still on the horizon for now. But I'll let Brian talk about raider team.
So speaking about the raider team, just like in JRTC, we have the marksmanship team, which instills discipline and attention to detail, or drill, which also helps discipline. You know, it's like the marching around. The raider team is all about fitness and teamwork. So we get to do obstacle courses and other fitness-involved activities, like building rope bridges, and just being able to collaborate with teammates to better operate as a team. And basically, we would just need funding to make certain facilities and other things that have raider, or that we would use in a raider team, because there are other competitions with other programs. So there's events like the wall climb, or rope bridge building, or rope climbing, other things like that. So we would just need, like, we would just need funding so that we can build those proper facilities and assets, so that we can train properly for them.
Ms. Bevis.
I just want to say I appreciate you being here tonight, and like Mr. Allen, I just have had the opportunity to work with all of you for the past three years and have watched you just exhibit such leadership and commitment to your school, and I really appreciate that. And, you know, you just have stayed consistent, and you're there all the time, and you're there for your school, so I wish you all the best of luck, and thank you for being here tonight.
Dr. Campos Spitsi.
So I know with the Council of Student Reps, we're often listening to the cream of the crop, but I am still just so impressed with how you guys have solidified your plans for after graduation, and that you're not just kind of like, oh, I still don't know. So I heard psychology, electrical engineer versus MBA, expanding an electrical business, and then Marine Corps. So just proud of the work the district also does to help you guys have an individualized education and really be ready for the next step.
I think those are all the questions that we have for you guys tonight. I'll just say thank you for being here. Thank you for your service on the Council of Student Representatives. I know it's a time commitment. I know you guys are very busy, all four of you, and so thank you for your commitment to that organization, and thanks for being here. I should also, as we transition here, I'll let everyone know that Jashelle, she's sitting with us tonight, as is Natalie, and these are our Council of Student Representatives that weigh in. They don't get to vote on decisions, but they do give us their opinion on different things, and we're so glad to have them both sitting with us here tonight. We are now to our superintendent's honor roll, and so Dr. Pilch, will you give us your honor roll and your report, please?
Thank you, President Matthews. Yes, I'm excited to do our superintendent's honor roll, and I think we have some guests here tonight who I'd like to come forward as I talk about this. So I believe we have folks here from the Assistance League of Greeley tonight. I think with us tonight, we have Joanne McGrath and Jennifer Olson, the Vice President, Margie Reed, and Vicky Sanders, and then not able to be here, but important to mention our Debbie Patterson, the President of the League here in Greeley, and Gwen Brinkman, the Chair of our Operation School Bell. So welcome, ladies. Come on up. I'm going to talk about you for a minute, and then I'll give you a chance to talk if there's a few words you'd like to share. But I'm really pleased to honor the Assistance League of Greeley. They have a history of having supported Greeley Evans School District students and families now for years and years and years, and have provided really thousands and thousands of outfits to students to clothe them for school. They've served more than 9,000 people here in Weld County. They volunteered nearly 20,000 hours and have returned over $180,000 to Greeley and to Weld County communities. One of the major efforts of the League is to provide school clothing, as I said, to our District 6 students here through their project called Operation School Bell. And last year, the League's Operation School Bell provided 20,364 polo shirts, 11,700 pants, joggers, and skirts to eight of our Title IX schools, our Title I schools, excuse me. The total budget spent on this effort during the 22-23 school year was $110,000. This is a significant contribution to District 6, and we are so grateful, and our families are grateful, our principals are grateful. We thank you so much. We thank you for this direct impact that you and your volunteers have had here on the students and families here in District 6. I want to congratulate you for your work, and I want to thank you for 50 years of service to our community, and I want you to know that we truly do make a difference. So who can we hear from of you all? Then I have a little certificate for you.
Hi, I'm Margie Reed, and I am the Chairman of the Philanthropic Programs. Gwen was not able to attend, or Debbie was not able, our President. We are thrilled with the honor we are getting from the school district. We, as ladies, relish when we get to sort the uniforms in the district warehouse, when we get to go to the schools and see the faces of the children when they get the new clothing. So many children have never had new clothes before. Everything is hand-downs, and when we get to give them two new pairs of pants, or joggers, or skirts, or whatever, two tops, it makes us feel wonderful. It's time for, like, Kleenex, it really is. We just love it, and with the hours that we spend at our bargain box thrift store, which you can all come see and take advantage of our wonderful thrift store, that's how we're able to fund our philanthropic programs. Operation School Bell is our largest philanthropic program. It began in 2004, and to date, we have given back, in this program, $1,166,547 have been provided to the Title I schools and their children's clothing. So thank you so much.
No, you're not done. I didn't mean to cut you off. I was just applauding you. But if you have more?
No, I don't. That was it.
All right. Okay. So you don't get to leave yet, because I also want to recognize an individual who's here with us tonight, who I know you all recognized recently at your annual program. You couldn't do what you do, right, without the support of many people? And one of those people is Gilbert Erzmeny, our Warehouse Manager, who you all recognized and honored for his continued, just continued exceptional support to students and staff of District 6. So Gilbert, we'd like you to come up too. Gilbert, I saw you. I know you're here. All right. And then I'll invite Mr. Matthews to maybe join us in a picture, and I have some certificates for you all. Where do you want them? Gilbert, you look like taller than I am. All right, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Again, thank you so much for being here tonight, and I'll just remind you all that the superintendent's honor roll is a new initiative we started this year. We really just felt like we needed to recognize folks in our community and in our schools for that extra bit of effort that really makes a difference here in District 6. So thank you again for being here tonight to be honored. I also want to just say a couple of words about the Fulbright program, if I may. I know you all have mentioned it, it was in the minutes, but I'd really like to recognize those folks who are here tonight, who support the Fulbright program, Madeline Millian, and those teachers who are here tonight as Fulbright Scholars, and maybe some of your teachers who you are in their classroom, or your principal who has hosted a Fulbright Scholar. Would you all just please stand and be recognized for a moment? We are so grateful for this partnership with the University of Northern Colorado that Professor Millian runs. We are grateful that you trust us with these teachers and that you have partnered with us in this way to bring this richness into our schools here in District 6. These are all secondary school teachers, so in grades 6 through 12. It is not an elementary program, and there's 22 teachers here that have been here, will be here for six weeks total, from 17 different countries, mostly from Central and Eastern Europe and from Asia. So again, thank you for coming and sharing and helping to enrich the lives of our students and our staff here in District 6. And again, Madeline, thank you so much for trusting us to do this and for the partnership. Really appreciate you all. Thank you. Thank you, President Matthews. And I know they are supposed to watch a meeting. You can take your, as part of your Fulbright Scholar experience, you're here to watch a meeting, and Madeline, you decide when you all want to take your exit, okay?
Dr. Pilch, so that concludes your honor roll and report? Okay. Next on our agenda is the Innovation 2030 Update, Student Learning and Achievement Summer I see Dr. Dattery coming to the podium. Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would like to say in introduction?
No, I think President Matthews will just turn it over to Dr. Dattery and Mr. Anthony Osmus, our two Assistant Superintendents, who oversee our elementary and secondary schools, please.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch, President Matthews, and members of the board. We are pleased to provide you this update on our summer programs. Our summer programs continue to support our students who need additional time to meet grade-level expectations and credits in grades 1st through 12th grade here in District 6. And before we start with this update, I just want to take a minute to thank all of our teachers and our administrators who designed these programs, put their time and energy into them to make them the very best that they can for our students, and really support many of our students in their learning throughout the summer months. So just thank you to all of them. As we know, this work is grounded in our mission and our vision of our district, ensuring that we engage students in a well-rounded and excellent education, preparing them to be college and career-ready. And while summer school addresses many of our values, of course, it really focuses on students come first, and knowing that every child can achieve, and that we promote access and opportunity for students. As you know, within Innovation 2030, there are four focus areas, and the work of summer school sits under the goal of student learning and achievement. The first goal of student learning and achievement is to provide a personalized learning experience so all students graduate on time and are career and college-ready. And we align our resources to meet grade-level and graduation requirements, which is that first objective within Goal 1. There are three outcomes outlined in this area within the strategic plan. In all areas, we have outcomes, and there are three particular ones in this area. Students graduating on time is the first one, as well as supporting students meeting state expectations on state assessments in ELA and math, all of which were supported by our summer school programming. And while our primary focus is supporting students in completing coursework to graduate on time at the high school, we also have a focus on addressing learning gaps due to pandemic disruptions at all of our grade levels. Our summer school programming was entirely, again, funded this year through ESR dollars this past year, as well as in prior years, since we've had our ESR funding from the state and federal government. So first, I just want to start off, I'm going to share a little bit with elementary and K-8 schools, and then Mr. Osmus will share a little more on our middle and high school programs, and then finally end with some next steps. We did hold summer school experiences for all of our 17 campus sites. Some, however, of these sites did have to be served at a neighboring school due to construction. So very good news for our community that we have that kind of construction, a little bit of disruption, because that's an opportune time, as we know, to do that kind of big lift and work. But again, the administrators and the teachers made a lot of adjustments, and our students and families as well are still attending summer school at some of these neighboring sites, for a total of having 1,159 students participate in this summer programming. And then we had four, oh, excuse me, and that was for a half a day, for four weeks in the month of June primarily. And then in July, we did host at four different sites, a jumpstart program to support incoming kindergarten students. Schools did not want to do an incoming jumpstart program for kindergarten students if they couldn't house it at their site. So there were fewer schools this year than in prior years, but just due to construction. So additional to the learning opportunities that are had in the classrooms during these summer months, we also provide excursions and activities for our students one to two times throughout that four-week summer school program. And here are just a few snapshots of what students experienced, and the smiles on their faces, which kind of says it all. They really enjoyed. Some of the examples of some of the excursion students took part in included the Butterfly Pavilion. There was a field trip to the Weld County Airport Field Trip. The CSU Engineering Camp was also held, and there were police, you know, like Evans Police Department excursions, just some different things like that, just to get kids out and experience some different things, whether it be more local excursions, or also some, we, you know, will even get them as far as to that Denver area with, like, the Butterfly Pavilion, as I said, as well. So over the last few years, many kids have been able to participate that over the summer months, and that's just a nice added feature. One way, one of the ways that we assess the effectiveness of the elementary summer school program is to complete a pre-post assessment in both the English Language Arts and in math. And you will see the gains here across all grade levels for each of the two content areas. So these are the gains from the pre-assessment held at the beginning of summer school to the post-assessment at the end, on the same standards that are focused on in those summer school months of those four-week, of that four-week time period. We're pleased, again, with the gains and proud of the teachers and the students and parents who participate, parents who had their students participate, and certainly the students and teachers who were a part of that. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Osmus, and he'll share a little more on middle school.
Thank you very much. I would have to say that our middle school students had a blast this past summer, so just watching them interact with the content and then just some of the activities, they had a great time. This past summer, 412 middle school students in our traditional middle schools and our K-8s attended an intensive academic program focused on our cores on math, science, language arts, and social studies. This was down just a little bit due to the construction that we've had, so similar to what Dr. Dattery said, in our middle schools and our K-8s, we also had some pretty significant construction, especially at Heath and Franklin. Students learned through hands-on experiences with our teacher support, and like Dr. Dattery said, we just appreciate our teachers for the time that they put in this summer, and as well as our facilities and our transportation for getting our students to different places throughout the summer. In addition to summer school, 5th grade students also had the opportunity to attend transition programs at their incoming middle school, where they either had a transition day, or they utilized the rolling start to help students experience their new schedule, or even just feel like they belong in their new setting. In addition to core academics, our schools offered many different school activities to keep them engaged. Students took advantage of our learning labs, participated in activities with our local leaders, stayed active with outdoor sporting activities, and participated in environmental learning. I was at Prairie Heights the day that Officer McLaughlin arrested Mr. Bob Williams, but not really arrested, but just arrested him so that the kids could go through the actual process of investigation and really diving deep into the work. And so our staff, our administrators, everybody just jumped in and had a great time with our students this past summer. We also majored, one of the majors for our learning is a pre-test and a post-test, and as you can see, we had our students take a pre-test and dived, dove deeply into the content, and then took a post-test at the end of the year. And the chart here shows the increase in proficiency from beginning of the summer program to the end of our summer program. Additionally, our summit schools invited students that scored lower than 70% on any COG skill, and a COG skill in the summit term is like a skill found within a standard. And so this chart shows the percentage of students who surpassed their 70% goal of the students who were invited to summer school. of the students who were invited to summer school. This is the percent of students who actually then were able to get above the 70% with the additional time that we provided them. So all in all, summer school was super successful for our middle school and our K-8 students. At our high school level, we offered intensive credit recovery that allowed our students to either extend their semester or even retake courses they needed to stay on track to graduate. We had over 900 students in our high schools take advantage of summer school, participate in an incoming transition program, take an advanced class, or attend IB or AP bootcamps. We also offered an SAT prep class for incoming sophores and juniors. During this course, the students took a practice SAT test, received focus instruction on gap areas, and then retook the SAT test. At the end of the course, every student increased. All in all, high school students offered quite the array of offerings to support or advance the learning for our students. In high school, wouldn't be a total fun experience without some things outside the box. So we were a little impacted this summer. Central was at Bella Romero, and Northridge was at ECA. So we, again, we thank everyone for the inconvenience, and especially thank transportation and facilities for helping out in these areas. However, regardless of location, many students found themselves in learning environments aligned with their summer classes, such as the Pooter Learning Center was utilized and other, as well as other learning spaces. Like I mentioned, over 900 students attended summer school to either retake a class, finish coursework from previous semester, or even take advanced classes. As you can see from this chart, we had 297 students that completed one course or more, 516 courses completed, and we had a total of 265.5 credits completed this summer. All this means that our students are either advancing, getting them, so they're more prepared for college classes, or they're able to then stay on track by completing some courses that maybe they just need a little bit more time or some more support during the summer, summertime. As we continue to work through our, through our next steps, we continue to continue with grade level or higher instruction for all students, offer support with that through before and after-school, Saturday School, before school, after school, or Saturday School, to ensure that all students stay on track to graduate. And then we'll also review our summer school data and offerings for continual improvement. But all in all, through this program, we found our summer school to be very successful, and we appreciate the opportunity to do this and look forward to doing this again this next summer. We will take any questions or comments.
I imagine we might have a few for you. Ms. Papas is first.
So first, a question for Dr. Dattery. Can you talk about the assessment that you use for the pre and post-assessments in this summer? Sure. Thanks. The pre and post-assessment are assessing the standards that are addressed in the summer school program, and those are those high-leverage standards at each of the grade levels that we know that students needed that additional time, looking at the year of data, and knowing that those are those standards, right, in both English Language Arts as well as in math, that students needed that extra time, that extra bit of work and focus on in order to get to mastery. And that's what those assessments are, and those gains that you're seeing are students that gained from the pre-assessment to the post-assessment in mastery of those standards. So that's the first, that percent of students who gain that mastery.
So those are similar to the assessments used during the school year?
CMASS, yeah. But they are, we create those assessments, right? They're internal assessments, so it's not a different assessment that we're using, or it's not with a curriculum per se, it's what we know that our students are needing, and we create those.
And then just to both of you and the staff, all staff that participated, I just really thank you for the robust opportunities for our students and the number of students that are able to just access this summer school, this summer school programming. Many years ago, when we first sat down and started thinking about how do we want to allocate our funding, and we, I remember sitting around the room talking about the fact that we really wanted to give our kids experiences, excursions, and opportunities out of the classroom, and just looking at your report tonight, it seems like that has been a consistent and intentional commitment over the years. So I thank you for that, and thank you for all the teachers and staff that participated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Sullivan.
Obviously, with the high schoolers, this election would be done if, you know, they haven't passed the course, or they're trying to move ahead. So that just makes sense for those kids that have signed up. But for elementary and middle school, are those selected by teachers? Are they, is it open to the entire district where our parents can sign up voluntarily? How do you choose and select those students?
Yeah, great question. What we do is we really start, where we start is with that, looking at the assessments and how students are performing throughout the school year, and who are the students who would most benefit from coming and extending their school year into those summer months? And then they are personally invited by teachers, and we do very, you know, intentional reaching out to, and more than once if we're not hearing back from them right away, because we really know that extending that year for students who need it most will be of the most benefit. So it's really through looking at that data and extending that personal invitation. Yeah.
Ms. Mash.
Thank you for the presentation, and I don't know if I did my quick math, I think it's like about 1,900 students across all the grade levels. So that's awesome, that's what, I don't know, maybe eight or nine percent of our total student population. Do you have any data on whether those numbers are increasing, if more students are taking advantage of this program?
It's okay. I was gonna say, so we're both saying the same thing, that down just a little bit with construction. Not much. We thought maybe, you know, we weren't real sure, because we had a considerable amount of construction happening this summer, but really it didn't impact too tremendously. So it's pretty steady with just a little bit of a decline. But yeah.
I don't know if there are any more questions from board members? I'm not seeing any. Again, I just want to echo the thanks, and thanks to our teachers. Please thank them for us. I know that when teachers get to the end of the year, they're anxious, like everybody else, to begin summer, and to make that commitment to be with kids for the entire month of June is a great sacrifice on their part. And so please give them, thank them for us.
We will. Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. Next on our agenda is our public participation. As a board, we welcome the comments of community members, and we dedicate a portion of each business meeting to provide an opportunity for the community to present brief comments. All speakers are limited to two minutes for comments. Our board members typically will not engage in discussion or provide an immediate response, but we will ask our district staff to respond as appropriate. Written testimony or speaker handouts must be submitted to the Board Secretary, Ms. Amy Lemon, not to individual board members. The board is committed to providing a safe environment where all the members of the school community are treated with dignity and respect, and we expect all speakers to exercise their speech rights responsibly. Speakers are responsible for their own speech, and speakers' remarks must be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. Anyone who deserves order may be required to sit down or to leave the boardroom. We ask all speakers and those in attendance to conduct themselves in a dignified and non-disruptive manner. Cheering, snapping, clapping, and other distractions are not allowed during or upon completion of any public comment. First tonight, we have Ms. Bobby Schilling. Welcome, Ms. Schilling.
Thank you.
Thank you. You'll have two minutes.
Good evening. Years ago, our district test scores were published in the local newspaper, the Greeley Tribune. This was a great way to provide facts to the community, and especially parents, on how the district and the schools within it were doing on educating our children. However, over the past few years, for some reason or another, that went away. My question to the board is why? Also, the district sends out mass emails and text messages with many other types of updates that the parents are made aware of. Why are we not doing this with the test scores? I believe we can do much better about being transparent and making sure our parents know when the test scores drop and where to find them. Without any notice from the district, I was made aware of the test scores this past week. What I found was disheartening and, quite frankly, embarrassing, considering my children both attend D6 schools. We speak upon fourth graders' results, and this being a pivotal year for students, so I stuck with these scores. As for Language Arts, our district reporting, our state reported testing for fourth graders in 19 elementary schools. Of those schools, only five had any improvement in last year's scores. That means 14 of the remaining schools' fourth-grade test scores dropped, 14 out of 19 dropped. As for math, the district reported testing for fourth, I'm sorry, the state reported testing for fourth graders in 15 elementary schools, over half, or eight of them, had drops in test scores, eight out of 15 schools dropped. What makes these figures worse is that the test scores a year ago were already averaging in the 20s. This board has, this board has quite grandiose plans of giving all students a pathway to becoming bilingual, or ensuring all students are provided every career path possible, which are great. These are wonderful, ambitious goals, but yet are, we are struggling for these kids to read and do math at grade level. After years of now failing test scores, the parents are still waiting on a plan to get back to the basics of educating our children. Step back and be honest with yourselves and this community. This district is failing our children, and something must be done now. Thank you for your time.
Next tonight, we have Ms. Stacy Castillo. Welcome, Ms. Castillo. Thank you for being here. You'll have two minutes.
I have a call to action for special education. I believe one thing we can agree on is kids should be allowed to be kids, no matter what struggles they may face. Education for special needs students has made major improvements over the last couple of decades, allowing for students to attend public school. Even if they aren't making typical strides academically, it's given them a social connection that they may not receive otherwise. But currently, there seems to be an issue of getting and retaining paras. Is it the pay, the credentialing process, lack of support from leadership? I don't know. No doubt it is an issue nationwide, so I ask, what are you all doing to combat it? Here is a District Six story, though. A middle school student who has the mentality of an early elementary child, not only is their disability mental, but it's physical, preventing them from being mobile as other children. Due to funding, the parents had to start homeschooling away from the friends and the social connections made, because the student couldn't manage to remember the class schedule or physically make it to class on time. The student was supposed to have a para, but because of funding issues, there wasn't going to be one. No one to help them memorize a class schedule or get to the appropriate classroom. What type of funding sacrifices are you all willing to make so that Greeley Evans, District Six, has the funding to be able to provide paras so all of their students get to have a childhood memory of being a kid, no matter the obstacles they are facing? I also call to action the district to hold educational meetings for parents of special needs students with legal representation and interpreters so that they can truly learn and understand their rights. What better way to show the community you are truly willing to work with them?
Thank you, Ms. Castillo. Next tonight, we have Ms. Ellen Foster. Thank you for being here, Ms. Foster. You'll have two minutes.
Thank you, and good evening. My full name is Frances Ellen Foster. My pronouns are she, her, hers. It's tradition in my family that at least one or two people in each generation get the delightful experience of using their middle name. And what I have found is, right now, there's a lot of controversy around names and pronouns of students in schools. There is nothing more critical to our sense of self than our name. When I came in tonight, the gentleman checking in said, Ellen Foster, and are you speaking? And it gave me such a great feeling, they knew I was me and not my sister, and they recognized me from previous meetings. When I go to a doctor's office, or a financial planner, or a business, often the forms, the computers will only take the forms as Frances Ellen Foster. And I always say I use my middle name Ellen. If I go back a second time and they have not made note of that, I am less likely to return. I love the places which says, what do you prefer to be called? Generally, I write in Supreme Goddess of the Universe, and then in parentheses, Ellen. And to me, it's a no-brainer to honor kids with their name. Whether or not that's what it says on their birth certificate, that is who they are, and it is not my job to tell them who they are. It is not anyone else's job to tell me who I am. I feel the same way about pronouns. In Sierra Leone, where I did my Peace Corps service, the pronoun "e" was used for he, she, and it. And people say, oh, we're not about pronouns, pronouns don't matter. I think a lot of people in this room would take offense if I used the pronoun "it" when I referred to them, although it was perfectly acceptable in Sierra Leone. It is not for me to determine someone's pronoun, it is for that person in their expression of their true self to determine the pronoun, and it is for me to honor that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Next tonight, we have Ms. Angelica Weiss. Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Weiss. You'll have two minutes.
Just in the light of what was said earlier about the stats that were just released, you guys keep spouting, oh, graduation rates, that's what you're running on. When I'm speaking to people, they're appalled when they hear the stats of the district and that these kids can't read and do math, yet they're graduating. That is a huge fail. These kids, I've talked to business owners this week, they said they cannot hire someone who can give change to people. This is a problem for the community. It needs to be dealt with, and if you want to run a graduation rate, that is completely ingenuine. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weiss. Next tonight, we have Ms. Sonia Miller. Welcome, Ms. Miller. You'll have two minutes.
Love always tells the truth. When I was a child, I was harmed by an adult in a position of trust, a teacher at a church school. When I finally told, only one couple in the entire church admitted to believing me. But I knew I could feel, deep down in my heart, that even my perpetrator's wife believed me. In short order, I was expelled. He suddenly had the money for the best legal defense around, while my family lacked resources and knowledge of the legal system. My case was dismissed, my parents spared me the details. I know I told the truth. I know that many adults failed to protect me, and I have to wonder what secrets they harbor that prevented them from helping me. Love doesn't keep secrets, and it always tells the truth. I will believe a child who tells me they've been harmed, because I know the pressure they're under to stay quiet. I also know that children are targeted for this kind of abuse, especially when a parent is compromised. Thorough investigation, which has not been done here, almost never results in the arrest or conviction of a pedophile. Why? Because it would expose too many people, and too many secrets, in too many places. The knowledge of evil is a burden. I first thought you were here for the good of the children. When the truth became clear, the injustice burned inside of me, and my failure to process my emotions has led me to act in ways unbecoming, which have served to distract from the truth at hand. For this, I am sorry. I have learned that public meetings are just puppet shows, and that your reactions give you away. I have learned that the longer you do wrong, the harder it becomes to do right. I have learned that the people who need, that people need to walk their own paths and suffer their own consequences. I've learned that vengeance isn't mine. I've learned that fear lies, but love always tells the truth. For a long time, I blamed God for not intervening, but the reality is, in my experience, it was the adults around me who failed to intervene, or worse, helped to cover it up. I have vowed never to be that adult. I've seen Satan in recent weeks, and I don't envy anyone who has beheld it to him.
Thank you. Next tonight, we have Mr. Javier Garcia. Welcome, Mr. Garcia. You have two minutes.
Good evening. With the upcoming election, I have had the privilege to speak with our Hispanic community, with families particularly, on how important it is to vote for the school board. However, Brenda, you have said that you are for the Hispanic community, but I find it interesting that the people are unaware of who you are or what you stand for. Although, they have your signs in their yard, or in front of their businesses. Shouldn't they know who you are? I find it deceiving that you say this, and yet you fail to actually acknowledge or address our Hispanic families on a personal level. You cannot be for us if you are not standing with us. You are preying on our culture because of your name and the color of your skin for your own good, not for our people. Us Hispanics will always stand together, but you are using us to your Us Hispanics will always stand together, but you are using us to your advantage without even sharing a single act of respect or care for our people. We find it disappointing that you have been dishonest with not only yourself, but with the Hispanic community as well. I say this because we see your tactics, and we find them unacceptable. What you are doing goes against our Hispanic culture, and what our Hispanic culture actually stands for. I am Hispanic, I am part of the Hispanic community, and I will always stand for the Hispanic community.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Thank you. Next tonight, we have our consent agenda. We will need a motion to approve.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second. Thank you both. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Pitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda are revisions to Policy KF, Community Use of School Facilities. This also is an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves revisions to Policy KF, Community Use of School Facilities, as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion from board members on the revisions to Policy KF, Community Use of Schools, or any comments you would like to make, Dr. Pilch? Seeing none, Ms. Lemon, I think we're ready for a vote.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Pitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next is our Safety and Security Update and Annual Safe Schools Update. This, too, is an action item that needs a motion. Oh, sorry. This one doesn't need a motion. Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would like to say in introduction to this, or we'll just turn it over to Chief of Security, Mr. Gates?
Thank you very much, President Matthews, members of the board, and Dr. Pilch. Mr. Henson, and I appreciate your time this evening as we detail the safety and security components that are in our district. The annual Safe Schools Update will be intertwined with this update. In compliance with the Safe Schools Act, our Safety and Security Unit conducts a vulnerability and risks site assessment at each school site at the beginning of each school year. The numerical results grid for each school, as well as the assessment tool, has been included in your packet. This is, as you know from previous years, perhaps, a seventy-point inspection of all things, school interior and exterior, policies and procedures, training and awareness. Onto security personnel and training. I serve as your Chief of Safety and Security. Wade Corliss is our Director of Safety and Security. Wade's been with us just over a year. He is a fifteen-year Greeley Police veteran, who was both a School Resource Officer, a School Resource Sergeant, and Commander of the SWAT Team, so we were delighted to have him. We have a new addition, been on board about a month, and that's Brad Lubke. Brad's in the room as well. Brad is also a fifteen-year Greeley Police veteran, was a School Resource Officer for quite some time. Left the police department a couple of years ago and went to Boulder Schools, and we were delighted to hire him away from Boulder Schools. Brad serves as our Assistant Director of Safety and Security. We currently have twenty-two campus security monitors, serving our high schools, middle schools, and some of our K8s. As I think you know, we enjoy an excellent relationship with our law enforcement partners. Greeley Police have a Sergeant and four School Resource Officer servicing our schools in Greeley. Evans Police has one officer serving our Evans schools. And new this year, the Weld County Sheriff's Office has a deputy assigned full-time to the campus at Bella 48. That's working quite well. Onto training. The list does not all-inclusive, but cover the most significant training modules for you. Fire drills, kind of age-old, that schools do fire drills, right? We do as well. The Uniform Fire Code calls for ten fire drills in each school year, with two of those being in the first two weeks. Because there are so many and such a mandate, we have fire drills pretty well dialed in, fortunately. Lockdown drills, to my surprise, after twenty-one years at School District Six and forty-some in law enforcement, there is not a single mandate for a lockdown drill. Nonetheless, we do them routinely here. It may not be a state mandate, but it is the mandate of Dr. Pilch, myself, Mr. Corliss, and Mr. Lubke. We do a minimum of two per year. Frankly, a performance in a drill is a direct corollary to performance in the event of an emergency. And if you don't drill, you're probably not going to get it right in an emergency. Once in a while, our drills are not performed, maybe to the degree that they should be, and we simply do more. So, we feel strongly about not only the lockdown drills, but weather drills when we get into the second semester, where we could have some tornadic activity in our county. We have been actively involved, more so all the time, with active shooter training. We are actively involved in the InstaCommand system. That's a standardized approach to coordination of emergency response. The Raptor system is an integrated school safety software that deals with visitor management, lockdowns, reunification. We've been really active in the Raptor. That came about as a result of the Miller v. Overright that our residents passed a number of years ago. I Love You Guys is a crisis response, post-crisis reunification system. The district went to this this year. I was slow to go to this, because I didn't like their lockdown grid. Many school safety professionals, in my capacity, didn't either. They changed it. It's without question satisfactory. We are actively involved in the I Love You Guys situation. Safe to Tell, I think you're aware, is an anonymous tip line, where anybody can call, text, email, an anonymous line. It rings into Camp George West, into the State Patrol in Golden, and is then disseminated out to myself, Mr. Corliss, Mr. Lubke, and the applicable school principal, and in most cases, law enforcement. We receive about five hundred Safe to Tells annually, which is not abnormal for a district of our size. We are recently actively involved in GoGuardian Beacon. That identifies students who are at risk for self-harm, suicide, and/or make computer-related searches that would indicate they might be prone to school violence. It is too early at this point to get a quantifiable number, but we are getting quite a few of those, and we've had to adjust the template just a little bit to glean the data that we really wish to receive with that. Standard Response Protocol ties back to I Love You Guys. For years, we had a lockdown grid system here that was consistent with the traffic light when you're driving down the street, green, yellow, or red. We've gone to a five-pronged system now, which is similar. It's hold, secure, lockdown, evacuate, and shelter. Our staffs have been trained on that, and we're in the process of getting that data up in all of our schools. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Henson, who's going to talk for a little bit about infrastructure.
Thank you, John. In infrastructure, I'm just going to talk about things you've seen in the buildings already. We worked with our security department, as well as on my staff. I have a locksmith, access control specialist, who's helped design all of our new buildings and our renovations and our camera projects, so we actually have him in-house. So, since really 2019, we have or are installing over two thousand security cameras in our district. We should be done with that here this spring. We will have by this spring, secure vestibule system at all of our schools, including safety, glass, and access control. So, our last few, very few projects we're beginning right now, and will be done by the end of the summer. In many of our buildings, especially new construction and major remodels, we're able to put in lockdown buttons where we can lock all external doors. We have electronic doors we're putting in, in many of our main corridors, front entries, rear doors, et cetera. And interior classroom locks, which was big for teachers, so then, in the event of an emergency, a teacher can just use a button and lock the door from inside their classroom. They don't need a key, don't need to find a key. If they drop a key, they don't have to pick it up, et cetera. So, it's very, very easy. That'll be consistent in every classroom in our district by the end of the summer. And then also, in our major, our new builds and renovations, we've had to replace our final panel, fire panels, some of which are old. These all come with voice evacuation upgrades, which, dependent on the emergency, will tell you where to go. And then also, we have to install school safe antennas in our new building, which are antennas that allow our local 911 dispatch to connect to our radio system, so we have EMS in our radios, all talking the same at a particular site. Some other thing was security cameras. So, with our thirty-one school buildings, sixteen buildings are complete. We are in the process of completing thirteen needing final adjustments. Final adjustments means two cameras are in back order, you know, one camera needs to be focused, but most of the cameras are there, and most of them are working. So, in most of our building there, in twenty-nine of our buildings, cameras are functional, almost to a hundred percent. We have two buildings, last two buildings are currently being cabled, but they will have their cameras finished by the end of the summer. And when we talk about cameras, we say two thousand camera heads. A head may have up to four cameras in it. If it's in a hallway cross, we have the ability to see four directions on those. Safety and security, you've seen these in our buildings. This is an example of one vestibule. Primarily, we have a standard for these, but we do have some unique buildings in renovations where we have to be creative. And the idea is to make sure that we have a secure perimeter, and that there's always a two-step process before somebody can enter a building. Most recently, I know you were at Greeley Central, and so we had to be a little bit creative there with the castle, but that's working very well. Also here, just some examples of other things, door magnets. Why do doors have door magnets? If we go into fire alarm, that will release door magnets, doors automatically close. So, that'll happen in classrooms, like at Greeley West. Every room will do that, but wherever we have fire doors in corridors or exterior doors, they will shut and lock with the fire. In the middle, you can see, that's our standard lock, thumb on the inside. It looks simple, but we'll have replaced that in every classroom. And then door buzzers. Those of you that went to, I know that went to either Greeley Central or the old Greeley West High School, you probably put pennies indoors, maybe to let your friend leave a door ajar, so maybe your friend could come in later. A lot of people have done that. Door buzzers, if that door is not shut within fifteen seconds, it'll buzz, meaning that door needs to be shut, so someone needs to pay attention to it. In our vestibules on the left, you'll see, trying, you know, for customer service, we do have pass-through windows, so if a parent just needs to come to bring something, drop something off, pair, you know, lunch or paperwork, that they can just do that right at the window, and then they don't have to come all the way in the building. And then you've seen A-Phones, our camera communication. If someone needs to come in after hours, they need to buzz in, that's the first prompt to get into the vestibule. And then this is an example of our fire panel upgrades. We have eleven of these in our district, which were woefully needed, but there's good reason that we tore down some buildings. It was lucky, because those fire systems were really bad. So, we've upgraded all those. And, you know, with this comes remote monitoring, so from an app or from a computer stream, if an alarm goes off, we know exactly which alarm is going off immediately, and can, when fire department's on the way, they can have that reading, get an actual sight of where the problem is. And then also, carbon monoxide detention. So, if we have a boiler room, or a boiler's gone bad, carbon monoxide levels are increasing or something in a building, those will also go off, just like you have in your home. So, those are a big advantage to our buildings. And so, that's it for infrastructure. Mr. Gates?
As simplistic as it may sound, if you see something, say something. In this business, we rely on everybody in the system to report things that they see that may not sound right, or may not be quite right. A number of our Safe to Tell tips revolve around, or calls that we get revolve around information isn't accurate. That being said, we'd rather check it two or three times than have somebody have knowledge of a potential catastrophic act or an act of self-harm and not know about it, and have something catastrophic happen. So, in our unit, that is our mantra, as simplistic as it sounds. And we do a pretty good job systemically with this, but we could always do better. With that, Kent and/or I would be pleased to take your questions.
Thank you both for being here and for the presentation. Ms. Sullivan has a question.
I guess we have some teachers locked in at home. I just received a request for a question. This is actually from one of our teachers in the schools. Why do schools that are now being remodeled right now have no bulletproof glass in the classroom doors? They are all flimsy, thin pieces of plexiglass. And then the follow-up is, do the windows and doors to the new build classrooms have bulletproof glass? If not for either question, why not?
Mr. Henson?
No, the secure glasses going in are external, are external doors that are new. So, securing the perimeter around the outside was the number-one priority. That's what almost all schools do. And the interior is just regular glass, as it would be anywhere else.
So, there's not going to be any future of replacing the doors, then?
On the inside of classrooms? That is not in the present plan. From our bond plan, it was secure vestibules, exterior doors, classroom door locks. That was the priority. Pardon me? Yeah, it's cost. If we did every window, like second floors, there's places, like at Greeley West, when you're looking out the cafeteria, everything on the bottom is there, because it's a big space, but when you go up to the second level there, you don't need it there. So, we have put it in places that are of, you know, importance to the security from the outside, outside in.
Okay.
We also, I will say that we use a laminated glass. I was at a brand-new school in the area last week, and they use a film. And research has shown that a film is flimsy. Laminated glass provides you quite a bit of time.
Any other questions from board members? I'll just say, thank you for everything you both have done and are doing for the safety of our students. Being a parent, I greatly appreciate it. Mr. Gates, you mentioned the lockdown drills, and that's absolutely true, that we don't, can't always, you can't imagine what's going to be going on in a school when you actually need to lock it down, and we need those procedures. Teachers and administrators need to know them well, because when, in the moment, it's hard to think about what needs to happen. You just have to know it, you have to know it. And so, even though it's not state law, I just want to say thank you for mandating that. Greatly appreciate it. And thank you, Mr. Henson, too, for all the work that you've done through the bond issue in getting, making our facilities much more secure. And thank you, guys, both, for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Next up is our superintendent contract, and this one is an action item that needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six approves the superintendent's contract amended as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Not seeing any, I will just say that this contract is essentially the same as last year's contract, just adding another year to our superintendent's tenure. And so, with that, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next is the consideration of district unified improvement plan. This one is an action item that will require a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the district unified improvement plan as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. I see Dr. Dattery coming to the, to the podium, but Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would like to say in introduction?
Yeah, thank you, President Matthews. So I think Dr. Dattery will talk about the school improvement plans and the district unified improvement plans, but I think we'd also like to talk a little bit about some of the student achievement data and try to help clarify some of that. I mean, it's far more nuanced than, than, than 14 schools out of 19 dropped. And that's one, one subject area, one grade level. I mean, and that is accurate information in one subject area at one grade level. It absolutely is accurate and it is absolutely a concern for us. But I'll let Dr. Dattery take the presentation and, and share with you what she has prepared for tonight. And then I hope to be able to answer between the two of us, other questions that you might have about, about student achievement and about our plans to address student achievement. I want to be very clear, we take these plans very seriously. We know we've been, we are working, we have to work diligently to come back from the impact of the pandemic on our, our students and teachers and families. And we know that one year of planning is not enough to do that and that we have to do multiple years of significant intervention to get to, to where we've gotten. And, and that's really how we've gotten to the graduation rate we have. We have stayed the course for eight years, seven years now, with our graduates initiative, which you all have heard about, but have stayed laser-focused on high school graduation and what that means in how we intervene with, with every single ninth grader who begins to, to fall below their expectations in English and math primarily. And then we do that throughout high school, which we can talk more about later, but frankly, graduation rate does not line up directly with elementary student achievement. It never will in District Six. We have, our younger children have a lot of growth and, and a lot of growth to make by the time they become a high school senior. And, and you've met many of those seniors here in this boardroom who've overcome tremendous odds to be ready for college. And are, are we done? Absolutely not. We still have a lot of work to do. But with that, I'm going to let Dr. Dattery talk a little bit about that work and then we'll be happy to take questions that you all might have.
Thank you Superintendent Pilch, President Matthews, and, and members of our board. It is a pleasure to be able to share with you much of the work that has gone on to address the different aspects of, of growth and achievement that our district is working toward attaining. I want to first start with the process for developing the district unified improvement plan. This is developed in a much quicker process and pace than it has been in years prior. The last two years, the timeline has been upped. So it is developed from May through that October of year of each year, and it is submitted at that time. And the preparation for this improvement plan is really includes the work of the district academic achievement team in consultation with the district accountability committee. And when I say that that academic achievement team is really taking the work that is happening across the district and really filtering that and putting it into one district unified improvement plan. So it is across the board. Priority performance challenges are identified and then action steps are updated and in alignment with not only what those priority performance challenges are, but also within the district's strategic plan. There are two performance challenges that were identified, that we identified in the unified improvement plan for the district. The first one is on ELA and math, academic achievement and growth. And that includes our students who are EL, or English learners, as well as students who are special education students. During the three years within COVID, we have recognized that students have showed, while they were showing progress, they have shown a decline since that pandemic time in both ELA and math. It is notable, however, the percent of students that we have increased of, of our EL students who are on track per the WE TO Access Assessment. So that has been a positive growth as well as an increase in our graduation rates and a decrease of dropout rates. So while there is some work to be done, we're seeing some other positive focus on the, and aspects of the data. So those are still certainly areas that we are working on and, and wanting to continue to focus on and make improvements on. The second priority performance challenge is that in the area of family engagement. And we know that we need to engage more and more of our families in support of their students and making sure that they feel and know that they are a part of their, their child's journey and, and education. So those are the two main priority performance challenges. Within that, there were major improvement strategies identified, and there are three. Each one of these three has the different action steps associated with them. So I just want to share those with you tonight. The first one is on quality tier-one instruction in both ELA and math. So that is that first instruction that students get to meet those grade level expectations. The action steps are many, and these are again, the things that are happening at the building level to support our schools, to make the growth with students and are supported district-wide. So many of these things, in fact, you hear about or you have reports on, you know the work that's happening district-wide. The first is on elementary literacy implementation, and we know that we're in year two of a very important adoption work that will really continue to support our students in the area of growth and achievement in their literacy skills. The second is on those career pathways. We're fully supporting that, the opening of our CTE center and to create pathways that are really responding to industry needs so that there are multiple pathways for students beyond graduation. The third is on professional learning communities in the work that our secondary schools are focusing on to deepen that work of analyzing student data and then knowing through that data and that protocol, what they need to focus on to help students be more successful in, in classes and in attaining credit. Avid crosswalks are that of supporting that collaborative, the collaborative structures within the avid curriculum and the supports that are happening in the, in the classroom. Curriculum compacting is the support of personalized learning plans in that the district is working to support curriculum compaction within mathematics and a focus, and this focus is particularly important for students who are identified as gifted and talented. And so what compaction means is that they go more quickly through that course, that coursework in a given year and maybe do two years in one. Special education plan is that of implementing, that's the, the plan that we have identified and implemented throughout the district and really ensuring that we have asset orientation as a focus for our students, that what the students bring to the table and that they're being, that that is being focused on as well as an inclusive mindset that students can learn anytime, anywhere and in the general ed classroom with supports and providing those opportunities to learn through evidence-based practices. We support avid district-wide. That continues to be a focus and is in every elementary, middle and high school. We're very proud of that work and that continues to support student achievement. Community support for literacy and the ways of other, other organizations supporting the work of literacy in the classrooms, such as Book Trust or Reading Core, Kids Hope and UNC Reading with Bears are just a few of those. Math, elementary math, as well as the middle and high school, that continued work and focus to support math, mathematics, K to 12. Equitable grading practices is also something that we have been really focusing on and ensuring that teachers of students in grades six through 12 implement those practices that are really thinking about how to ensure success in that content and that, in that grade so that they can continue to achieve. Common assessments help to ensure that across the board, that before we get to those high impact and high-stakes assessments, that we are monitoring student growth and achievement along the way and that that can be a discussion across grade levels and across schools. At the secondary level, this is done through the utilization of Performance Matters and that's a vendor, a platform that we use that really helps to, to bring that, make that more accessible at the teacher level. Disaggregated student groups is really about supporting identified students in different groups, populations of students, whether it be a student who has an individual education plan or a student who's learning English, so where we are making sure all students are attaining grade level standards. And continuing the work in support of adult educators, adults and their education rather, so that they can really focus on the support students need. And through the PML and PLL is about math and literacy supports. And I already, and I talked about the common assessments as well. So those, while that's a lot of different action steps, that's really about that district-wide supports and just, just to really think about what that looks like for literacy and math improvement. The second one is about that full implementation of a multi-tiered system of support. So knowing that there are many different aspects that go into ensuring that students are successful and that MTSS process is implemented well. So this is, there are several different action steps. The first, pleased to report to you that the elementary report card committee met that came out of negotiations last year and knowing that we really needed to make sure that we are supporting our parents and our families in ensuring that they know how their students are progressing through their elementary grade years. And so that report card implementation is beginning this fall. Secondary grading practices, again, kind of is similar to what I talked about in the first, but it's really about ensuring that there is a standardized measure of student understanding and progress, ensuring that there is accountability and that it is guiding instructional decisions in the classroom. The grad initiative work is big work that is going on, that is really helping to support and ensuring that students are graduating and are successful so that they can have doors of opportunity open to them beyond high school. So those school-wide systems that have been created to monitor those failure rates have really come out of that work and that just continues to be highly supported and, and a focus of what our high school teachers and leadership is really working on. In addition to the grad initiative work, it's important to note that ninth grade support. So what we know is that when students don't come in and are not successful in the ninth grade year, their trajectory follows and they are not successful in their high school years and potentially are either not graduating on time or potentially not graduating at all. And so that ninth grade support is important and not only that we want them to graduate, but we want them to, to do well in their high school years. So the work that Mr. Osmussen team are doing around those early warning systems and supporting teams at each of the schools is really important work. And that's really gotten more robust in this past year. The coordination and family, family and student support teams is, is super, it's very meaningful work for our schools and for our students and families when students may not come to school ready to learn, that what are the additional supports that we need to put in place to help support them and through, again, that MTSS process. The school equity teams is also a part of this and making sure that we have culturally relevant pedagogy, that we are meeting the needs of every single learner in the classroom and helping to support our schools to do that work well. The MTSS support implementation and educlamer, that's really just about the platform, but that platform matters because our educators don't need to waste their time in, you know, getting mired down in all that data. And so really providing some robust platforms that help them to write those plans and make sure that that work is done in the classrooms to be able to have a meaningful MTSS plan in place for students that need it. After-school and summer school programming, we talked about that a little bit earlier. That's certainly a part of this. Personalized learning plans, you learned about that a few board meetings ago. That is certainly also a part of that MTSS process. It's about that personalized plan for every student. Attendance plans, we know that if we, students won't learn if they're not here and we need to make sure that our students are here. That, our attendance has struggled since pandemic as well. And so we're making sure that our students were really doing some very focused work this year on how can we really re-engage some of our students who are, and families who are disenfranchised and not attending regularly. Response to behaviors, district, the district will support the implementation of a, of that revised, what was known as the discipline matrix now as that response to behaviors. And that really, that's been a meaningful work and been very helpful at the building level. And then finally, just really that placement for students who are, MLL means multilingual learners. So when students come to us beyond age 18, what does that look like for students who are multi-language learners and supporting them? So the third, as I said, is major improvement strategy number three around climate and culture, that it is a welcoming environment where students and families feel that sense of belonging and that we know when you feel like you belong, you have a greater chance of thriving and doing well. And so there's a few action steps that we know that we have been putting in place and have, and really continue because this work matters for our students. It's like that, it's that third part of true success for our students and our fam, and their, for our students. The first is around consensus training and we know that that works continue, so really making sure that we are continuing to train our staff in this model of collaboration and problem-solving. Especially important is that we have not been able to train, we hadn't been able to train rather during those pandemic years. So really being able to catch that up and making sure that we have not only train, have that training district-wide, but also a cadre of folks, about 10 to 15, who can really help facilitate that process internally and do some in-depth training. The second is around our social emotional learning and bully prevention curriculum. This, the district will continue the implementation of this curriculum that really just supports that development of students and providing them those ways in which they interact in healthy ways with their peers at school and, and knowing how to behave and respond to each other in healthy ways, as well as including a bully prevention unit that it was all part of what we talked to you about in the spring last year. So this is the year of implementation as that was mandated by state law for us to do, have some revision, well, we had to make some revisions and then therefore adopt some curriculum in that area. Family partnerships, this is all part of our strategic plan. We're very proud of the work that has come out of that and the work that our schools have engaged in to really engage families. And that goes right back to that priority performance challenge that I talked about of really creating more meaningful opportunities for parents and families to engage in student learning and their students' learning. The last two again is data analysis and where students are, or rather teachers and school leaders are really analyzing that school data so that they can analyze, know what students need after that analysis and really provide that kind of learning in the classroom. And then again, the school equity teams, it's not only what's happening at the school level, but also at the district level to support that climate and culture. So there's a lot inside of that district unified improvement plan. And again, as I started with, it's really in alignment with what we do within I-2030, but it's teasing out those parts and pieces that we know we need to really focus on this year to help support district-wide efforts in this area. So the next steps include the Board of, your review and actions, subsequent action tonight. So therefore then we submit the plans and they are for public posting at the Colorado Department of Education. And then this plan is implemented and continues through the spring of 2024. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dattery. I bet we have a few questions for you. First up is Mr. Bentley.
The state testing that comes out every year, that's every year's fourth graders, right? So last year was the third graders got tested, this year and?
Correct.
So it's not fourth graders year, like they got worse, right? The third graders aren't where the fourth graders were previous year, correct?
Correct.
We've seen that wave with, with the pandemic across the board, right? And it's not a, a micro problem, that's a macro nationwide problem. I mean?
Nationwide, yes. Excuse me. There's been, yeah, and many, many different articles, many different data analysis nationwide showing that students have struggled post-pandemic and to get back to where we were and then therefore exceed has been a challenge nationwide.
Do, do we know how many kids come to us not at the kindergarten stage, how many influx? Because we're growing district, which is pretty rare for the front range of Colorado. So there is, there's got to be a percentage of kids that weren't here from kindergarten. Do we know that number compared to fourth graders?
I would need to mine, you know, and analyze that data. But I don't have that for you off the top of my head.
Obviously, if we're growing, we have kids coming in that?
True.
We didn't have any input in their K through?
Because of our enrollment growing is what you're saying. I'd have to look at that.
So that, that's a factor. And then our, our, just our, yeah, lots of factors. But I don't think that anybody up here is happy with content, say, I don't think we're content with the graduation rate, even though we're proud of it, like we want to do better. So it just gets really frustrating to get fingers pointed and like to, to hear little tiny bits of information skewed to try to tell the district that they're failing is really frustrating because. is really frustrating because, you know, I know a lot of these teachers personally now, vast majority have dedicated their lives in borderline, could go out and get better paying jobs in, in the real world and out of the love of their heart for kids or doing this. It's, like I said a couple of times, but it's borderline charity on their end. And so I'm sorry that you guys have to hear that, someone saying that the district's failing the kids because there's no way that that is the norm or the majority, there would be no way that we got a disproportionate amount of national and statewide scholarships and in the, all the big achievement plans that we're getting in the national recognition. I think like the Betcher Scholars, we got a disproportionate amount of that through the state. If we were failing the students, we'd be getting a disproportionate amount of that on the other scale. So I just wanted to, to say, yeah, there are a lot of things that are, are part perfect. And from my point of view, being a newer board member, two years ago to what I know today, you guys are doing so much and so many out-of-the-box things that I wasn't even aware of that if anybody was worried, I would wish you guys would come hang out with us for a bit, come do some of these tours and just get to know. Because ignorance is bliss to a degree, but getting, getting educated on what you guys are doing from the top to the bottom is really outstanding and amazing. And it's just really hard for me to sit here and stay quiet when we keep hearing these borderline lies.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Ms. Papas.
I thank you for your work. And what strikes me is that I've been part of this process as a principal and also as a board member over time. And I have said this before, but I'll say it now as well. I appreciate the consistency in the identifying the goals and identifying the action plans. This is such a comprehensive and such a, well, to use Kyle's words, I mean, it's just, there's so much. And I'm looking out at administrators that are here tonight. We recognized principals a few weeks ago and went through a list of things. But everything that's in this plan is, is something that they're going to have to go back and work with their teachers and their staff. And then, of course, you're going to share the individual building improvement plans as well, which means there was the big deep dive into their data as well to identify strategies. So I, it's just, it is, it is very frustrating to hear people talk about just pulling out one piece of data. And, you know, I, that is very frustrating. I will say that, especially when there is so much work being done in this district to make sure that we are educating every student. And so I appreciate all the work. I appreciate all the principals. I appreciate, yeah, I just appreciate having been part of this and know that, no, never are we satisfied and do we always want improvements. So I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Mash.
I just also wanted to say whenever we meet with you individually to kind of go over this data and try to digest it a little bit better, what I really appreciate is that you and Mr. Osmus, like you are very intimately connected with the administration at each school. And so generally speaking, if there was a dip in something, it wasn't a shock to you. You're, you, you know, most of the time it was like, well, this, they, they took on an additional project or they took on an additional, I think there was one school that was taking on like maybe a higher intensity autism class or something like that. And so that created perhaps, you know, a disruption in this grade level that is going to be worked out. Or, you know, you knew that there were a lot of new teachers in a certain building. And so I just, coming from, you know, the large industry of healthcare, one of the Gallup questions is always like, you know, are your superiors intimately involved with your daily work? And oftentimes that's not the case. But I think in District Six are, there are many supports for our amazing principals as well. And so, yeah, I just appreciate the intimate knowledge of what's going on in each building.
Thank you.
Dr. Dattery, there, as Ben said, you gave us a lot, right? This is, there's a lot to digest. And as Ms. Papas said, not just for us, but for, for principals and to take back to, to our teachers. I mean, to say that it's comprehensive is really an understatement, right? Because you, you guys have hit pretty much everything. But, but I always ask kind of the same question. Where, where is the focus? And what are, of all of this that you've laid out for us in these three different focus areas, what is, what is it you're most excited about? What is it you think has the potential to make the most impact on, on student learning and achievement?
That's a very loaded, big question, especially when there is a lot in there. What I'm especially proud of is the alignment. So maybe it's a little bit in terms of what Ms. Mash was speaking to, that this, the work that's happening in this, what you see in the school unified improvement plans, what you see in our district unified improvement plan for this year's work district-wide is in total alignment with the work that is happening in Innovation 2030. Innovation 2030 was a 10-year plan. And how do we piece that out and, and parse that out year by year? That's what you see in this year's plan. And I'm very thankful for the guidance that is provided to us as a district so that we can then take that and say, through a data analysis process, then what do we need to focus on this year to make a difference? And I'm proud of the work that has gone on in our district, within our school teams to analyze that and be very honest about what is the work that they need to focus on in order to make that happen. They're very honest about what they know they need to do. And they, they stay up late at night and get up early in the morning and give up their lunches and, and give up their summers, as we talked about earlier. Spend countless hours of time and energy to make sure that their students are getting the very best education. And that means a whole lot of things for a whole lot of different students. And I think that our plans, I know that our plans reflect that energy and that passion and that direction and focus. And I'm very proud of that and that I just get to stand up here and share that with all of you because it's their work. And there's a lot of educators that sit behind this. So I thank you for asking.
Thank you for the answer. Ms. Sullivan.
I don't really have a question right now, but I'm just kind of sitting here processing everything. And I do thank you for your presentation because there is a lot that goes in. As a teacher, I know the work that goes in for the teachers, for the planning, spending time with the kids one-on-one, grading, lesson planning, it's endless hours. And you cannot thank these teachers enough profusely for what they do. But when you have parents bringing statistics of factual data to the floor, I'm struggling, I guess that we're calling them liars and it's, and, and the data that they're lying about. Because we need to address not just the good, but also the bad and the ugly in our district. And so instead of discounting the parents and kicking them to the curb, maybe we should address some of the data.
Ms. Sullivan, is this, is there a question from Dr. Dattery?
No, there is a question, but...
Question directed to, to us?
No, it's not a question. It's a statement that I don't think we should be discounting the parents, but we should be looking at that data and discussing it, bringing some of the bad and the ugly to the table so that the public actually knows what's going on instead of just talking about the good stuff. We need to address it all. And, and that's frustrating, I guess, on my end to see this being brought forward by the parents, but on this side of the, the wall.
I just want to be clear that Dr. Dattery has not talked about the parents, right? So you...
No, but we've addressed the data, saying that it's not accurate. And I appreciate her presentation. So by no means am I discounting what you brought to the table because this is a lot going on right here. And it's a lot that's being asked for, for the teachers and administration and the principals and whatnot, all the schools. But inconclusive too, you got to remember bring, include the parents in some of this. And by, I, I've just heard a couple of comments, it's just kind of rubbed me wrong. And it's frustrating because, again, being that parent voice, I'm going to speak up on their behalf.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Ms. Mash? Oh. And I would just say that that's, I think, no one's called anyone liars, Ms. Sullivan.
What is it? That's exactly what...
They get some borderline lies?
No, no one's calling anyone, you've heard Dr. Pilch say that the data was, was accurate what they presented. It's just one small piece of what is much larger data.
It's all data. Look at it. Look at it for yourself.
Right. It's, it's all data, but to, to cherry pick one, one piece of it, rather than look at the whole is, is not, you're out of order. But no one's called anyone a liar. But, but thank you for your, your comments. Are there any other questions for Dr. Dattery? All right. There is a motion on the floor unless there's any other discussion from board members. I'm not seeing any. Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Papas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries six, zero.
Next on our agenda tonight is the consideration of school unified improvement plans. And this two is an action item that needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District Six approves the school improvement plans for the priority improvement schools.
Second.
Thank you both. Well, Dr. Pilch, is there anything you want to say before Dr. Dattery introduces our school unified improvement plans? Okay. Dr. Dattery, back to you.
All right. Thank you. So now I get to share with you, and again, in your board packet was all of the school unified improvement plans. And I know that was a big packet. I hope you've been able to at least kind of look through it and, and see what's in there. Because I'm going to not read all of them. I am going to do a very big picture overview of what that looks like. And I also want to point out a couple of quick things within this. So what you didn't see were a few schools because there is a biennial UIP submission process now. So schools that are at performance, have a performance plan, which is the highest rating, right, of the four ratings, as long as they have been at that performance rating for more than one year, they can then go on an every other year submission. So last year, there were different schools that came before you on this biennial. This, so then this year, those schools are doing one, and you'll see it in here. So those schools that are on performance plan do have UIP. But these schools did one last year, so they don't have to do one again this year. So I hope that makes sense. That's that every other year, these are schools that are on performance plan. And per this House bill that was passed in 2016, it allows them to be able to do that. So if you were looking for those, you don't see them, and that is why. This is the timeline, it varies, very similar. It's the same timeline really as to the one that we follow with the district UIP. We get data in the spring, we analyze that. And our schools do have the opportunity to work with folks from the Colorado Department of Education, as well as, of course, with their school teacher community as well as parents at the school site within their school accountability committees to provide input into that process. And then they are due to us as, to review those at the district level in September so that we can then provide feedback, get them in final submission form and brought to you. And then again, sent to the Colorado Department of Education in October for publication. What are the benefits of a unified improvement plan? We know when we get those, get the scores, when we have multiple data points telling us what is, you know, looking at what do we need to do? We can then look at what that alignment needs to be from those multiple data points. And what does it say about us? That we can put forward into a single plan to move the work forward at the school level. It provides common documentation so that, you know, once upon a time, schools might create their own plans. That's very difficult, hard to, hard to maneuver through, particularly a district our size. So this provides us with a common format. It certainly is transparent. Anybody can go on to the school view and see these plans. That's where they go for it. When we say publication, it means that they are able to be public for public viewing. So it does provide that transparency and as well as just the input into the process is very transparent. And it does provide for those best practices to be able to really surface and make sure that we're doing the right thing for students and through that continuous improvement cycle and looking at that. So what we know is that there is that data analysis that I talked about first that happens in the spring, begins in the spring and then continues. So you really want to look at what are the trends? What are the challenges? And what's really underneath that? What are the root causes that are making it so that students are not all achieving where we want them to be? So looking at that is super, is very important. And again, as I said, it's from multiple data points. You don't want to just look at one data point. That's a very important and significant thing for us to, to remember in this process. The second thing that we do then, after all the data isn't analyzed, then is really to look at what's the targets that we want to set within a school unified improvement plan. So what are the, what's the challenge? What are the student-centered targets that we want to set? And then how are we going to know that students along the way are achieving those student-centered targets? And if there is that gap between them meeting those and, and this is where they're at, then what do we need to do to continue to get them to meet those outcomes that have been set? And then finally, the action plan follows. And that's again where we say, all right, these are the root causes, it starts there. So then what are the strategies and action steps that adults will do to make a difference? And what are those adult implementation benchmarks that we will set to know that we are doing the right work for kids? So there is a level of complexity within this improvement planning process. I believe it's a very solid plan and process so that it really evaluates not only, you know, multiple sets of data, but also looks at it both from a student-centered perspective as well as what the adults will do in the system to make a difference. And then all of that is progress monitored throughout the year. Excuse me. So this is aligned again to Innovation 2030, and I talked about that a minute ago. It is focused on school needs. To your point, we are not where we, we know we're not where we want to be. That has certainly been said and mentioned. And that is certainly continued work and focus for our schools. And it does include their major improvement strategies, therefore, outlined to be able to do that work. Monitoring that throughout the year for students, staff, and the school accountability committees, Monitoring that throughout the year for students, staff, and the school accountability committees, that's one of their focus areas throughout the year. Excuse me. The school focus areas include these six bullets. These really should, what I read through to you in the district unified improvement plan, very much align with all the things that you see on here. And as I was just, you know, again, preparing for these presentations for you tonight, just seeing that alignment within the school unified improvement plans of that quality-first instruction, both in math and literacy, that is the first one, you'll see that in your, in every plan, not in nearly every plan, you'll see that in every plan, that that is the focus at the school level. And the systems of support, in order to support our students to get there, focusing on that culture and climate aspect, that it needs to be a healthy and thriving place for students to be, to be successful, that family engagement is very important and it is a focus. We know that we can't do this work without our parents and that they are an integral part of their student's success. Data teams, data analysis, professional learning communities, you see that in a few different ways, excuse me, and then post-secondary readiness. I'm going to get some water. Thank you. I'll be right back. I have one, and I'm- Sorry about that. I'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you for that. We'll give you just a second.
I'm okay.
Okay. Ms. Mash has a question for you.
Not a question. I just, I too appreciate how we're able to align with the goals and the outcomes, the objectives, and not having to, to kind of come up with that as well. We have the systems in place, and it does feel very holistic with the systems of support reaching out to families. It's, it's, and I liked the word used, root cause. What is the reason that our student is falling behind? Maybe they had an illness, or maybe they don't have a ride, you know, all kinds of things. There's so many, so many different factors that could affect that, so thank you.
Dr. Dattery, I have a question, and it's, as I was reading through the school improvement plans, and I was just noticing the differences, right? And I was looking at Maplewood, and I was looking at Scott. And those are schools that are pretty similar demographics, pretty similar scores, pretty, you know, they're, they're located fairly close to one another, just down 13th. And, and yet, the focus of the improvement plans, to me, seem to be, you know, somewhat different, right? Scott seemed to be focused on, on family and parent engagement. And Maplewood, if I remember correctly, was more focused on, you know, tier-one instruction and making sure that our students were getting grade-level instruction, right, all of our, all of our students. So help us, help us understand, like, what goes in, how do, how do schools determine, like, what their, their priority is? And maybe that's not a question that you can, you can even answer, but if it is, I would love it if you, if you would try.
Sure. So first, so Scott does have, like, their first one is on climate and culture as their major improvement strategy, and really looking at that. And then they also had that focus on instruction, and that was their second one. And so they both have those, those aspects, but that family engagement being very meaningful a part of what, what Scott is really wanting to focus on this year. What goes into that truly is looking at all of the data analysis, so from panorama perception data. They also have give their own internal, looking at what their own survey data is telling them about how their families are engaging, what does the climate and the culture look like and feel like, and where are areas of improvement that they know they needed to make in order to support their student's success? And then looking also at the achievement data in both aspects, so, but looking at that indifferent through that lens of multiple data points at each of their schools to really be able to hone in and focus on the work that they're doing. What also makes them different is, is the teachers themselves and the work that they're doing at the school level. And so there's a different tenure, tenure of teacher at Scott Elementary than at Maplewood. And so the work and the focus that they've been doing looks very different at those two schools. So that'd be, those are other factors that play into each of our different schools and how they are looking at that and data, and then saying, so what do we need to do here to help support our teachers and staff, support our students to be successful?
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Yeah.
And I don't see any other questions for you. So thank you for being here tonight, Dr. Dattery. We appreciate both reports.
Thank you.
And since we don't have anybody wanting to speak, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Papas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. One last piece of, before we adjourn. Dr. Pilch, we know it's election season, and politics sometimes gets brought into, to our boardroom, and unfortunately, there's a lot of misinformation that gets brought in as well. But would you address just the special education topic that was brought up tonight?
Well, I will-
Or could you, I mean, I don't know if you can-
I'll sure try to. So let me start here and just say that I have not been made aware of this situation. I texted a special ed director, I've texted with Stacy and Anthony, none of us are aware of that situation, I'll say that first. That's not to say that it didn't happen. So I, you know, Anthony will be reaching out to Ms. Castile as soon as this meeting is over to gather more information. I will say that we have an obligation by federal law-
Order, please.
We have an obligation by federal law to provide services as prescribed in a student's IEP, and the laws around that are pretty, pretty stringent. And so if, if there is not a para available, we have an obligation to find a workaround to that if that child's IEP calls for a one-on-para, one-on-one para. We do have five one-on-one para-specific openings in the district right now, which, that's five children that don't have that one-on-one para position filled. However, what has been done is they've either pulled another staff member typically to be with that child, or we've hired a substitute teacher to be with that child. In one case, they, they take combined para positions and they're hiring another licensed teacher in special education. So we know there, there's no question, there's staff shortages across all of our districts in special education. There wasn't, I don't think there was a district, the data I saw was there was not a district in Colorado that did not have openings in special education when the school year started. So there's, you know, that, that is real. We are continually, about every three months, we're continually looking at the pay for our classified employees so that we, we can look at the possibility of adjusting as needed to stay in the market, because the last thing we want is for people to be leaving us to go to a neighboring district because of, you know, of a pay issue. And so, but I'm very concerned about what I heard Mrs. Castile say tonight. I'm very concerned that, that in some way, a child might have been excluded or felt forced to go home to homeschool, when really, I mean, we have a federal obligation to provide special education services. And there's lots of attorneys that work with us all the time to make sure that we're doing that. So Mr. Asmus will be following up with Mrs. Castile, and we'll hope to get to the bottom of that. And I'm deeply sorry to hear about it. It, it sounds horrific. If indeed it's the case, we need to find a way to remedy that.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Well, that's all that we have tonight. Again, thank you for joining us in person or online. We appreciate you. This meeting is adjourned.